This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. Today is Wednesday, February tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I like to call this evening's regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of which is fair.
To the Republic.
Which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Could I have the real call?
Councilmember Both?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Strobin?
Here.
Councilmember Servini?
Present.
Councilmember Hill? Councilmember Hill, I believe you are muted.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Thornton?
President. Thank you. Next to the consent agenda, if there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public comment, course, do we have any citizen public comments this evening?
Yes, we do. I've grouped them up a little bit. So I've got the first three pertain to the same subject. So first one is from Rick and Jen Yellen. I'm writing to the city as well as Tony, who has placed our property to be charged waterstorm drain fees. Our five neighbors who live on our private road are also being charged for stormwater drainage monthly fees. This fee is ridiculous, which I will now explain. One, we live on six acres with natural springs. These springs feed into our creek, which runs off to three ponds on our property. Our property grades southeast, completely away from any road Le Center has put in for being charged stormwater drain. Two, we live on a private road, which we, the neighbors, are responsible for. This is a heavy burden, but we do not ask the city to help us with this, as it is our responsibility. Our private road begins at Northwest Three Hundred and Nineteenth, which has zero water drainage. Anytime there is rainfall, snow, it flows down Three Hundred and Nineteenth and into another creek at the bottom of the hill. Not onto any roads, as it then goes uphill to Timmin Road. Number three, look at any geographical map to see this is consistent with the grade of property going southeast away from any Le Center road. Our property is one-third of a mile away from Timmin Road. There is zero drainage on Northwest Three Hundred and Nineteenth. Number four, we are all on well water, not city water, which again, we are responsible for maintaining, not the city. This monthly bill, which very few of us have paid, will continue to sit unpaid. This is not only frustrating, but it is to the point of asking, where is the common sense being put into the decision making for these bills being mailed out? Feel free to call me, as I have now called and left messages with the powers that be. The city council, or sorry, to the city council, I understand, but a few of our neighbors had attended the in-person meetings and described their frustrations. They were told they would get answers back, and to this day, there has not been a letter or a phone call explaining why we residents are being charged for services we do not use and do not plan on using. At this point, we have decided to move forward with obtaining a property attorney if this is not looked at and addressed. I appreciate all of the council's time and understand that this is mostly a volunteer investment you all put into your community. I can relate, as I too have invested thousands of hours into Clark County and make positive changes in the past. Please let us know what we can do to move forward with this monthly charge we have been burdened with. The next one comes from Peggy Shutt. I am writing in regards to the so-called water runoff from my property on Three Hundred and Nineteenth Street. We do not have any water that runs toward Le Center in any way or form. It is just another way for the city to harass us and try to get money. I am not going to pay. I am seeking legal counsel about this matter. My neighbors feel the same way. Just because we got annexed into Le Center, I do not have water runoff. I'm getting tired of Le Center City, Le Center Council trying to get money any way they can. The next one comes from James and Charlene Dyson, to whom it may concern regarding stormwater charges. Of course, I realized when the city sought the annexation of certain properties from Ridgefield to Le Center, that the primary reason for that was tax revenue for the city of Le Center. What I did not anticipate was manufactured charges for services that were not being rendered nor benefit of those properties being built. Not only are these bills not a reflection of any urban or benefit to those being built, but they are totally arbitrary in the manner in which they are distributed. In canvassing neighboring properties, I find that some are built and others are not. Many of those properties not being built are closer in proximity to the city limits that contain storm drains than those of, than, sorry, those of us located miles away from such amenities. When attending a city council meeting over a year ago, I expressed my concern over the inconsistency of this issue, to which I received the response from Matthew Jenkins, that the actual costs of the storm drain system far exceeded the city's fiscal preparedness, forcing them to seek additional revenue. I'm sure any reasonable person would agree that the lack of fiscal responsibility rests with the city leadership. Taxes are paid to support the services that all citizens have the opportunity to use. I find it totally unreasonable that we should be expected to support a resource that has no benefit or impact to our properties. Consequently, we will be making no further contribution to storm drain building. The next one is from Joanne Tucker. Mr. Mayor, the residents of Le Center have been waiting anxiously for the results of Le Center Police Department assessment and the fate of our town. When will the assessment and the council's decision be released to the public? Are we going to have an onsite police department? Can you please tell us what other options the council has considered in an attempt to retain a full police force onsite in Le Center? Battleground was recently successful in obtaining funding for some of their law enforcement expenses. Have you looked into something along those lines for Le Center? The next one is from Sally Alkison. It is a concern to me that after allocating twenty thousand dollars for an analysis of our current police department that was supposedly going to be contemplated in November or December, we are in mid-February and still have not seen the results. One has to wonder if the hiring of one of the consultants as the interim chief of police is the reason the citizens have not seen this expensive analysis. Perhaps the hiring of the consultant is a conflict of interest? And that completes all the public comments.
Okay, thank you. So next on the agenda is the mayor's report. I have just a couple of items I want to share with the council this evening. First, Monday, February fifteenth, all city offices will be closed for President's Day. So reminder that the city offices next Monday will be closed. And just a reminder to the city council that we will be having our first city council retreat set. It'll be February twenty-fifth, and it'll begin at five thirty PM, and that also will be a virtual meeting. So I want to address those two dates with the council this evening. That's all I have. Next is the attorney's report.
Good evening, Mayor, council, public. I'm joining you tonight from the upper Hood River Valley in Arkdale, Oregon, and trying to figure out the timing of my return to Vancouver with all the weather coming in. Bouldered forecast for the gorge. But I'm here with my wife, and we're thinking we're gonna shelter in place and weather it out and enjoy the snow. But there's really no attorney report tonight. Just wish that everybody remain warm and safe.
Well, thank you for that, and the same to you, Bronson, stay warm and safe. Next, our city council events, Councilmember Both.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening here, everyone. Today was the first of two days of the AWC City Action Days. And I attended that, and Mayor Thornton was there, Councilmember Hill was also present. We attended some good lectures, got a lot of good information. We had a fifteen or twenty-minute meeting with Senator Ann Rivers today, and Mr. Swanson was present there as well. Lloyd Halverson was. That was very informative, and it was good to renew and maintain that relationship with her. And we had a very positive meeting. Otherwise, I just want to wish everyone a lot of safety with this storm coming in. Weatherman seems pretty positive that we're going to get hit with a lot of snow. So please be safe out there. Okay, that's all I've got tonight.
Thank you for that. Yeah, and appreciate you mentioning the City Action Days in our meeting with Senator Rivers. And then we also will be attending the second day of meetings tomorrow. Councilmember Both, Councilmember Hill, and myself. So, yep, they've been excellent at AWC conferences. So next is Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Don't have much, just want everybody to be safe. And for Matt, compliments to the Public Works crew getting the de-icer down. I've noticed it's on all the streets here, especially the hills and stop signs. So thank them for getting out in the evening or early in the morning, wherever it is. But just everybody stay safe and stay warm, get your grocery shopping done in the morning. That's all I have.
Thank you. Strobin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind people to make sure they're locking their cars if they're out in the driveways. It seems like there's been a spike in vehicle prowls. A neighbor across the street actually had somebody break into the car and open the garage door with the garage door opener in the car. So, you know, kind of unnerving times there. Not sure what the reason for the spike is, but just wanted to remind people lock their cars up. With that, be safe this snow season and take care. Thank you.
Councilmember Servini?
Nothing in addition to add this evening that anyone else hasn't already said. Stay safe.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and just want to welcome all of those that are joining us this evening from the city. We appreciate you logging on and being a part of our council meeting tonight. Already stated, I attended also the City Action Days through the video process, and I thought it was very informative. The other council members I know have already been through those in live. We're probably up at the Capitol and look forward to that, if that may happen in the future. Again, I also wish safety to all who are going to be out and the weather in the next several days. And again, appreciate Matt and his staff getting the city ready for the weather coming up. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. The next are staff reports. We do have three staff reports this evening. The first one will be presented by Chief Richardson. Chief?
There you go. Sorry about that. I'd like to talk about, this is just your January monthly report that Mark Denny used to give you, and we're just going to continue that. We did change it a little bit. I'm trying to give you a little bit more combination of some graphs and some numbers and also some narrative. It's a work in progress, so please bear with us. Before I start up with this, I just want you to know that we have prepared for this weekend as far as a snowstorm. We have tow straps in our vehicles. We've got flares in our vehicles. We purchased chains for our patrol cars. So we'll be out there and drive around safely and be able to handle anything that comes up as far as dealing with anybody that's stranded or we need to get to a call. As far as crime and arrest statistics, we had twenty reported crimes in January. And if you look thefts, we had eight thefts. Predominantly, those thefts are porch pirates and mailbox thefts, which are very common, obviously nowadays with everybody sitting at home. More and more people are doing their online shopping. And so as your driver comes around and drops off packages, a lot of times they're followed with somebody who drives around behind them and picks them up. We had one vehicle theft, and this is also a number, another item that's very common this time of year, and that's when you go out, start up your car to warm it up and leave the car unlocked, and somebody else gets, comes by and takes your car and drives it away. So that's another thing we just want to warn the community about, that although it's convenient to get into a nice warm car, you've got to be careful that somebody else doesn't do that before you. We had one burglary, and the burglary was somebody's shop got broken into and they had tools stolen. And we had a couple of vandalism, some traffic crimes. But the one thing that we did have, it's a kind of a high crime, we had an armed robbery, carjacking. This occurred up at the Shell Station, and it's, the car has already been recovered. It was recovered, abandoned in Portland. But this is a gentleman that stopped in the gas station to work on his car. Engaged in conversation with somebody else. While they're engaging in the conversation, they were talking about all kinds of things. Ultimately, the suspect pulled out a gun and says, hey, I'll trade you the gun for your car. And the guy says, well, I'm a ex-fel, and I can't have a gun. So then the suspect fired the gun off in the air and took his car anyway, so, and drove away. Nobody was hurt. We don't have much suspect information. We're trying to get video from one of the trucking companies that was parked in the area. You don't know, a lot of these trucks have cameras on them that offload into a server, and we try to get the video from a third-party company to see if there's any suspect information other than the description we got from the victim. And we recovered one casing at the scene, and that casing ultimately will go to the crime lab, where it will get cataloged and put into a database. So if there are any other casings from other crimes, or they ever recover a gun, they can match everything up together. So that's where we stand on that. As far as reported arrests, we had five arrests. One was a DUI. We had a warrant arrest. We have three drug-related arrests. Again, two of those three drug-related arrests are up at the junction. We've got our younger officers that are very aggressive. They're driving through the parking lot up there at the Shell Station, and a lot of people pull off there to get gas and use drugs. So two of those people, one was marijuana, another was meth, were arrested. And so I just want you to be aware that when you see the, it's one thing you see in our community, a lot of drug arrests. A big increase in drug arrests. A lot of those are really directly impacted by very aggressive officers, and they're up there at the junction making car stops, talking to people, and during the course of their investigations, they come across drugs. So, and those drug arrests ultimately go into our, what we call our Class A offenses, which impact the crime rate. So that's very important for people to understand that that's part of this crime rate we're talking about. In addition to that, if you look at last year's crimes, we had some assaults. Predominantly, most of our assaults are DV-related, so they're domestic violence-related. So it's not stranger on stranger. And my guess is some of it is related to the fact that we're all locked in our houses together, and people have a certain pressure point, and they act out and get angry at one another. And then we'll move to page three. This is calls for service. I just wanted to give you an idea of what calls for service are made up of two components. One are officer-initiated, that's anything an officer does. The other, community-initiated, that's when somebody calls three-one-one-nine-one-one or walks into PD to ask for a report. You can see, twenty-twenty, the pandemic really impacted not only us, but every other law enforcement agency in the nation as far as officer-initiated activity. You can see it really dropped about the time the pandemic comes out, which that would be expected for a lot of different reasons. Obviously, one, we want our officers to be safe and socially distanced, so they're doing that. Number two is stores, businesses are closed, and people are working from home, so there's less traffic on the road. So those, you can see that was really impacted. And, but you could also see if you see community-initiated events, they kind of, a little bit of an increase, not much. Actually, if you look at the next slide underneath that, if you look at twenty-twenty versus twenty-twenty-one, it actually, I'm sorry, it actually went down by three. So community-initiated events were one-twenty-six last year, they went to one-twenty-three this year. But you can see officer-initiated activity really dropped from four-hundred-and-twenty-eight events down to one-hundred-and-thirty-nine. We anticipate as things open back up, people get back to work, officer-initiated activity will start back up again, and then we'll see what happens about the community-initiated activity. We'll talk about the assessment later on and talk about what we've been doing. We discounted twenty-twenty for statistical purposes, just because it's such an abnormal year. So we used twenty-fifteen through twenty-nineteen data on most of what we looked at. Finally, reports taken in January, we took a total of thirty-eight reports. Five of those were supplemental reports, and just put a definition of that underneath there. A supplemental report can be one to a hundred reports that are behind the original report that was taken. So if we have additional property loss, we interview additional witnesses. We collect evidence and book it into the evidence system. Every time an officer does something, he writes a supplemental report. So five supplemental reports, thirty-three original reports of all types. So those thirty-three reports of all types, some are crime reports, and other are incident reports, where it may not be a crime, but the officer is just trying to document something. A lot of times, that might be a DV incident, where there's no crime committed in a DV, but the officer will document that he responded to the house, they were arguing over finances, there was no physical confrontation, and then he documents it in a report. And then finally, just some notes of what the officers were working on, some of that is traffic emphasis. That's a big thing here in the community. I can tell you, I looked at data from twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen recently, as far as traffic emphasis. Traffic emphasis were way up between twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen. Traffic citations were way up. And the good thing, the result of that, you look at reported accidents from twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen, they actually reduced those. So that's part of what they call the three Es of traffic safety. Education, engineering, and enforcement. So enforcement, making people drive better, or these, because they've either been stopped, or they see somebody that stops, so they slow down. So that actually was a positive thing that's happening in the community. And then, again, the significant event we listed is the robbery that I told you about. And finally, and these community messages, which I think we've already talked about, so a little bit, keep your cars locked, because people will steal things inside your car. We had a lot of barking dog calls in January, so be considerate of your neighbor. If your dog is barking all night, be a good neighbor and bring the dog in. And then again, the one thing to add is say, if you're going to warm your vehicle up, don't walk away from it and leave it unlocked. So that's all I have right now for this staff report. If you have any comments or you wish to add something or see something, shoot me an email. And again, we will work on this and continue to change it to make it better for you and give you the information you need. Thank you.
Chief, this is Randy Williams.
Yes, sir.
Was there any identification of the car prowlers that were on Seventeenth Circle? Because they were in my yard, my cars were locked, but they broke into my neighbor's car.
Not at this time.
Okay, we just identified the car, but not the people.
Right. Type of car. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the chief?
Yes, chief, this is Doug Both. On page two, or slide number two, there is a label on the twenty-nine percent to arrests. And the chart doesn't indicate what those two arrests were for. Can you tell me what those were?
I'm looking on page, what page is it? Page two?
Page two.
You must have got the first draft, because we changed it, I think, unless I'm missing something. I've got one traffic-related arrest, one warrant arrest, three drug-related, with a total of five?
You see, and I've got one that's got two more for twenty-nine percent with no label.
Yeah, that was a corrected, you've got the uncorrected copy. So we downloaded it, and then we swapped it with a new one, so you must have been very fast and pulled the original one up.
Well, it's what's on the screen.
I'm sorry?
It's what's on the screen right now.
Okay, hold on, because I, I can't see that. Hold on. Yeah, that's a mistake. Because the copy I'm working on is not this one, it's the one we replaced it with. So what they've done is they've just loaded the incorrect copy on here.
We didn't update the, we didn't update the reports on the agenda. Sorry. Okay. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Both?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. Again, thank you, chief. So next staff report we have this evening is the Public Works Staff Report, and Public Works Director Matt Jenkins will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens. I've got the February Public Works Staff Report. All staff operations, as usual. First line item under Streets and Facilities is kind of on our minds right now. Staffs monitoring roads and the forecast for snow and ice. Salt brines being applied around town on the outer roads to protect slick conditions. And if the roads are dry enough, right now, we've got dry roads, which is great, because we can get the brine down ahead of time and stop that ice layer from being built up. They've also, and I'm just going to expand on this, because it's not in the report, but after the forecast for this week, they've also made sure all the plows are ready to go. All the equipment is repaired and in good working condition, and all staff will be present for, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, if necessary, along with auxiliary staff from the wastewater treatment plant. So we're in good hands. They've been working very hard. I thank the council members for their compliments, and I'll make sure to relay those to the staff tomorrow. So moving on, annual maintenance and services are being performed on all the city vehicles and equipment right now. We tend to do the heavier maintenance in the wintertime, because summer is the high-use time for those. Flailing of the city rideaway has started, so if you see the big green tractor out there, just mind the signs on the back and give it a wide berth. Public Works continues to work on keeping the city properties maintained and the drainage systems clear throughout the city. And as always, Public Works crew is continuously monitoring and repairing potholes throughout the city, along with any other road hazards, and keeping an eye on for damaged signage. The community center, place structures and restrooms throughout town remain closed due to COVID-nineteen and the phasing. Staff continues to monitor the situation in Clark County, but reopening will likely happen at Phase Three. On parks and grounds, staff has removed several tree hazard, trees that are hazardous along the trail, along several trails and throughout town. Many of the birch trees have been removed from the paver lot across from Holly Park. The remainder of the trees have been thinned and will be treated with a pesticide. These trees, like many others across Northwest, have been infested with a wood-borne beetle that kills the trees. And so we're trying to manage that, keep it from spreading. Staff has been working on trail maintenance throughout the city. Pruning will continue as time and weather permit, and mowing will resume in the near future, but right now is the time of year where nothing's growing. So Battleground and Clark County Work crews remain unavailable. And for personnel, currently, all staff are healthy and working normal shifts. All appropriate safety precautions are being followed. On the project side, Public Works will be replacing some of the older degraded street signs with new larger signs this year throughout town. It's a larger project than it sounds, so we have many signs, and then there's the inventory management component to that as well. So that'll be an ongoing project, and I'll probably have quarterly updates on that. On the wastewater operations side, all plant parameters remain well within compliance, as usual, with our MPDES permit. And staff continues to optimize plant processes as the weather continues to change. It's just an ongoing, ongoing battle they fight with optimization. As the weather cools, they have to keep changing it, and then once it warms up, they have to keep changing it. So it's a year-round, year-round optimization. Bio-sol shipments continue on their normal weekly deliveries. Staff is working with the city of Klammer on optimization between both our facility and their facility to improve efficiency for solids processing. We're working on reducing their hauling costs through thicker loads, so they'll be able to get more product down here in one load. And then we're also working with them on their process, so they don't have to use as much pH adjustment chemical, which impacts our polymer efficiency for thickening. And Kelly Rasmussen with Klammer Public Works, he's been a real help on that, and I appreciate his cooperation. On the maintenance side, routine preventative maintenance is ongoing. Staff has switched the drive motor that was identified as faulty on the bio-sol dryer, so that's been taken care of. On the administrative side, the January discharge monitoring port- On the administrative side, the January discharge monitoring report is being compiled and prepared for submission to ecology. That's actually ready to go now. And the annual biosol's report is currently being assembled from March submission to ecology. And staff is currently working regular shifts, but maintaining social distancing practices. And one other item that didn't make it on the report last week, uh, is the waste load assessment will be due in March as well. And that's an annual report that we'll be working on. On the project side, uh, staff is in the beginning stages of the SCADA system upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant. Now that'll be up going, ongoing, and, uh, our target completion date is late May. On the building department side, permanent construction are, are still progressing at a really strong rate. Staff is conducting an average of twelve to fifteen stops per day, still with about twenty to forty inspections per day. Uh, single-family residential plan review times remains at two weeks. Uh, staff has taken in, as of last week, staff had taken in twelve single-family building permit applications since January first. Um, inspection for the Little Center Middle School, um, is beginning to pick up significantly. Uh, our building officials out there more and more, uh, so that project is moving at a high clip. Um, staff are currently working modified shifts due to COVID nineteen. And the office space remains close to the public without appointment. On the stormwater side, um, we are continuing to work with Clark County Health on the MST testing for identified markers in the bacteria loading, um, in the, uh, in the storm system. And the city continues to work on source identification for those pollutants. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for Mr. Jenkins this evening?
Hey, Matt, uh, this is Randy, uh, I have a low priority question. I noticed that neither of the radar speed indicators are working, or if they work, they work intermittently. Do we know anything about what's going on with them?
Yeah, I was speaking with Eric Wilkinson and, um, it, it becomes an issue of solar power. We have too many overcast days, these solar panels don't recharge the batteries at a, at a high enough rate to, to run them all the time. So is what we try to do is we try to have them operational during peak hours. And if you're, if you're, if your speed is on target, they don't come on. Uh, they, they should come on after you're one or two miles over the speed limit. And so we're trying to make adjustments to have better power efficiency, but it, it's a matter of those solar panels not producing a good enough charge.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Good report, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you very much, Matt. If there's no other questions, we'll move on. The next staff report is, will be from the city engineer, uh, Tony Cooper. And he'll give us an update on the Four Street Widening and Breezy Creek Culvert Replacement Project.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Um, this is, uh, the action requested is authorization for the hundred percent design for the Four Street Widening Project, Project and Breezy Creek Culvert Replacement Design. So I'm going to go into a little background of where we are, where we are to date. Um, on June seventeen, two thousand and nineteen, the Department of Commerce awarded one point five million dollars from, uh, two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-one state legislature, legislature appropriation. The Department of Commerce withholds two percent administration, administrative fee for management of the grant. The total money available for the design of this project is one million, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. In April, two thousand and twenty, a contract was initiated between the City of Little Center and PBS Engineering for completion of the thirty percent design. Alternatives were chosen for Breezy Creek, uh, Crossing Culvert Replacement and Highland Road and Four Street Intersection Improvements in order to continue the final, uh, design drawings. The two alternates consist of a bridge or culvert to widen Four Street over Breezy Creek and a roundabout or a signal to be placed at the Highland Road intersection. Um, the al- the alternative analysis, um, presented by PBS in a previous council meeting selected the bridge for the crossing at Breezy Creek and, uh, signal at, uh, Highland Road and Four Street. Presentation was presented at that time and it was placed on the city website to show, uh, the proposed design to seek public comments. So where we are today, right now, um, the proposal was submitted, the consultant prepared a proposal to complete hundred percent design to allow construction to occur. The proposal includes the bridge alter, alternate, alternate for widening Four Street between Cedar Avenue and Highland Avenue. The proposal does not include any improvements at Highland and Four Street at this time. The design services for the traffic signal will be added at a later date. There are many reasons why the signal option is recommended by the consultant and supported by city staff. This information will be mailed to citizens of Little Center and shown on the city website to allow the public to understand the criteria used to recommend the proposed alternative. The majority of the design for the, this project is the widening of Four Street between Cedar Avenue and Highland Road. And this will take several months to complete the milestones of this design. The time and cost for design of a signal is a fraction of the cost and time to design the entire project. The design, uh, of a signal can be incorporated as part of the overall project at a later date and will not delay the timeline of project completion within the requirements of the Department of Commerce grant stipulation. So a budget impact below is a summary of the budget, uh, for the Department of Commerce grant and the cost, uh, for, uh, designed by PBS. And of course, the budget for a thirty percent design has been completed and PBS has esti- has estimated the budget for the hundred percent design completion. PBS provided grant support to assist the city in obtaining construction funding. In Phase One, this consisted of exhibits and cost estimates for discussion with the state legislature and review assistance with the SDBG RTC grant application, which the city did receive a grant for that, for over a million dollars for that RTC application. The grant support cost is not reimbursable by the Department of Commerce. For Phase Two, PBS has estimated the grant support cost through design completion. So below I've got a summary of, of the costs and of course, the, uh, the grant amount is one point four seven million dollars. Uh, and the, um, the Phase One cost, uh, of the thirty percent design, uh, is cost six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and, um, a little over sixteen and eighteen thousand dollars. So the grant funding left, uh, following, uh, Phase One for Phase Two is, is just over eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Now, since, since the, uh, grant support, uh, is not reimbursable by the Department of Commerce, you, we can add that amount back into the amount of funding that we have left, ten thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars for that grant support. And so that leaves us, uh, a little over eight hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars left in funding for, for the Phase Two portion. The, uh, consultant has estimated that the cost for a hundred percent completion, completion of the design and construction drawings could be seven hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. And this leaves, uh, a little over a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars left, uh, following Phase Two. And then, um, so the, the consultant also estimated how much the grant support would be in Phase Two. It's just an estimate and they estimated just over ten thousand dollars. So if we add that back in to our available grant, uh, funding, there is approximately a little over a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars left of funding left in the grant for the signal design. So I talked to PBS and they've indicated that the signal design will cost less than what is left for that grant budget. So, um, it'll stay within the Department of Commerce grant, uh, limitations. So the total estimate by PBS for the remaining design, except for the signal, is seven hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. This remaining cost is requested for authorization and will have no budget impact to the city as it will be reimbursed by the Department of Commerce on a monthly basis. So the, the total budget to the city for the grant assistance is twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, this is the total grant support for Phase One, which is the ten thousand, two hundred and twenty, plus the, the grant support that's estimated, um, for the, for the next phase, which is just over ten thousand dollars. So, uh, again, this grant support is not reimbursable from the Department of Commerce because it's, it's for construction assistance. So an updated staff report for the cost of the design of the signal at Four Street and Highland will be presented to City Council at a later date. Um, i- is there any questions that you have?
Tony, this is Randy. Is there any federal permits we have to get?
Yes, there is. Since we got, um, um, federal funding, we have to abide by, uh, by the federal guidelines for, for the construction. So there, there's, um, some additional environmental work that has to be done. Um, and then all of the right-of-way acquisition, there is some right-of-way acquisition, acquisition that has to be, has to be done. And it's on the north side of, um, Four Street along the, uh, um, you know, the widening area. Uh, so we have to follow the, um, acquisition guidelines, the federal acquisition guidelines, which WashDOT, uh, they, they, um, oversee that. So there's, there's, uh, certain criteria that has to be followed to meet that acquisition. And so whether we have to actually have a right-of-way agent that's approved by WashDOT. So in answer to your question, yes, there is some federal requirements and, and the proposal does include that, um, part of it, uh, to, to, um, abide by the federal, uh, guidelines.
What I was looking at, uh, where I was going with, uh, anything to do with, uh, uh, ecology? With, you know, with, because it's, it's, you know, wetlands, it's a waterway. Uh, is there anything federal permit-wise we have to get for that? And which phase does that come out of?
Well, i- it's part of the environmental, uh, process. And so there will be a critical areas report that has to be completed and there will be, have some, um, uh, mitigation that has to be done. So there will be some coordination with them, I believe, as part of the environmental process. So there has to be a biological assessment. So Department of Commerce, Fish and Wildlife, there will be, they, they will review this to make sure that it complies. Uh, but that'll, I'll rely on the environmental consultants to, to, um, you know, do that work. But, but, but yes, there, there should be some, um, yeah, there should be a, the, that requirement is, is through all approvals for, um, for the critical areas and impacts.
What phase does that come out of?
That's, that's in Phase Two and it's already in the budget.
Oh, it's already in the budget?
It's already, it's already in that, yeah, in that proposal that I, I actually included proposal, which is, it's, it's pretty long. It, it goes in an environmental, uh, uh, assistance and, and that's all part of that approval, um, from Department of, uh, Ecology and from Fish and Wildlife and US Army Corps. There's quite a number of agencies that, you know, look at this and it's all part of the environmental process that's included in the, in the proposal.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing something. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tony, this is Dennis. Question regarding the, uh, uh, next time we review, how far out, uh, is our next review, uh, um, process?
For, well, I have to, well, um, I think that PBS is, uh, they have, I think at least one more presentation they will do. Um, you know, for the, the status of the project, um, a- and I can, well, well, we could certainly post everything on the city website. Um, and I can give some updates on the progress of the project as well. Um, so it'll take, it'll take a while because there's, there's a lot of milestones they have to go through. There's sixty percent, there's ninety percent, a hundred percent. So there's, there's several different milestones they have to, to accomplish to, to go through this, this design. So, but I could update council.
So it's like six to eight months at least, something of that nature?
Uh, you know, I think, I think the schedule, what we have to, they have to give me a revised schedule because it's kind of, it's kind of, um, prolonged a little bit. But I think they were, they were, um, trying to, um, uh, finish it by, by the end of two thousand and twenty-one. Although the, the art, the, uh, grant that we have from Department of Commerce that actually states that I think that we have till two thousand and twenty-three to, to complete the design, but they'll be done way before that. So I, I, I think by the end of the year, they'll, they'll be completed, but I have to, I have to find out what their schedule is once they submit it.
Thank you much.
Yeah, hi, Tony, Doug here. Um, yeah, that, that scope of work, I tried to read through that. It's a lot of detail there, as, as there should be. Um, I like the, uh, the references to the public outreach. I think at one point there was, uh, even maybe perhaps mentioned that there would be, uh, mailings going out even in the, in the sewer bills. So I think it's, it's good that, that we're making an effort to, to get the information out there. Um, in reading it through and I saw, um, repeated references to, uh, a future bridge, which is what we've agreed to. Um, but it got me thinking and asking myself if there were any, what, what the seismic standards are for the bridge. I realize that's not, not PBS to determine that necessarily. But do you know off the top of your head what, what Washington State requires in terms of, um, um, seismic standards on, on, on that bridge?
Well, that's a good question. I'd have to rely on the, on the, uh, structural consultant for that. I, I mean, they, they go by, they go by, they have, uh, you know, criteria that's, um, um, that's required by Washington State. You know, the, um, there, there's a lot of criteria they have to go through to meet that, to make sure that it's seismically, um, safe, that, um, is this state, that it's stable in the soil. And so they've done a lot of teotraht investigation and, and found, found all those parameters. So I'm sure once I get more of the design, I can, I can tell you what codes they're using, but, but it would be the state code, you know, and, um, um, just what, what's required generally in the state codes for seismic requirements.
Okay, yeah, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to put you on the spot and, and, but I, and then I think I'm kind of putting the, uh, the cart before the horse. But it was just, uh, just a matter of curiosity that, um, that occurred to me.
Yeah, I could, I could let you know, yeah, I could let you know once they get that from them. They haven't, they haven't, um, told me anything about the, the, the actual further design other than what their proposal says. But once I get the construction drawings, um, you know, there'll be a structural, uh, report that goes along with that and we'll have to have somebody review it, uh, to, to look at that. But I, but I'll know once I get that structural, um, um, report, that what criteria they used and I could, I could let you know.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Um, any other questions, uh, this evening on the report from city engineer?
Mayor, I moved to authorize the mayor to sign the contract for the proposal for PBS to complete the final drawings of the Breezy Creek Culvert Replacement East Fourth Street Widening Project.
My second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to sign the contract for the proposal for PBS to complete the final design of the Breezy Creek Culvert East Fourth Street Widening Project. Again, a virtual meeting, I'd like to get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Boff?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Servany?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Again, thank you, Tony. Um, so council, I would like to go back, uh, to the chief's report, uh, that he was, that he presented a little bit earlier. Uh, chief and I had a conversation about some additions to that. I apologize, I didn't get it put properly on the agenda. So, um, he was expecting to see it come up somewhere else and I thought it was going to be in his report. So I apologize for that, but he does have a little more information he needs to share with us this evening.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council. I just wanted to give you an update on the, uh, police assessment. I know that that's a conversation that's in the community. I want you to know that we've, we've, uh, finished all the review, reviewing all the data. And we had to get data from multiple sources and sometimes those sources had to write software programs to extract the data for us. And then we had to look at the data and make sure that the data was correct. In other words, was the software that was turned out the data, that anything looked abnormal or, or a number was off? And we had to go back in and find out in the software where that was and then recreate it again. So it, and plus that and plus the COVID issue has, did take a lot more time than we thought to get a report together. So the report right now is in, in the process of being edited, but I wanted to share you some highlights with you. In addition to that, we're still not done totally with, uh, the assessment. We need to, uh, do a council workshop and go into a lot more detail than I've been discussing here tonight. And we need to do some community surveys, some community outreach to get input from them. So it's an ongoing process, it does take time to get it right, and we would rather have it right, uh, than quick. I also want to tell you that before I begin, uh, when you see your favorite, uh, Little Center Police Officer driving down the street or responds to your call or you see him on a car stop, there's a lot of infrastructure behind that car and that, uh, patrol officer that nobody ever sees. There's a recruitment retention issues, there's a, uh, constant training, ever-changing policy and procedures, law and court decisions. We've got dispatch systems, record systems, information systems. We have to, uh, deal with vehicle maintenance. We have to deal with vehicle maintenance, personnel complaints that have to be investigated. And we also have a police facility that we have to maintain. And I guess my point is that police departments are very high risk, they're expensive operations that go 24 hours a day. And we face increasing labor costs, police reform measures, ever-changing standards and expectations. And all these place pressure on the organization and its budget. So, and there's a standard of care. Hospitals have a standard of care, medical professionals have a standard of care. I call it a standard response. Police departments have a standard of response. There are certain things that we have to do a certain way and it's constantly evolving. Or we have risks that either the officers at risk, the citizens at risk, either physical risk or financial risk, and so is the agency. So the departments, all departments have strengths and weaknesses and they all have a budget. And you have that and versus that, there's a gap. And that gap is what's the best practice to maintain adequate responses to changing laws, case decisions, additional training mandates and budget pressures? And that gap is full of all kinds of risk, unknowns and liability. And that's kind of what this assessment is also to help you do, to help you understand that, again, that police car and that police officer out in the street, there is a lot of working parts behind that. And I'd like to just con base some of that, some of it tonight and some of it later on. So we'll talk really quick about staffing. The police department's authorized eight commissioned officers. Those eight commissioned officers are a chief, two sergeants, five full-time police officers, and then there's an executive assistant, nine total employees, eight commissioned officers. If you compare that with the state, look at all the agencies that have between 20, 2,500 and 5,000 population. The average state average is seven. So we're one officer above the state average if you count all authorized positions and they're all filled and everybody's here. Like every other police department in the country, everybody has vacancies. There's not enough applicants to fill them and it's a moving target because people come and go for all kinds of true reasons. And so that's something we have to remember. Not only that, but you're going to have, you're going to have some future staffing impacts, which all police departments have. We have an officer that's going on his military deployment for a year. We can't fail behind him and so we have to keep his position vacant. So that's, that's an issue. People get more seniority as they get more seniority, they get more vacation time. In society today, there's a lot more legal mandated leaves that employees are entitled to that were completely different than when I was a, a police officer in you know, I had officers that had wives that had babies and they would take off and go watch the delivery, come back to work. It's different now. Now that you stay at home with a baby for several weeks and there's all kinds of leaves. So those things put pressure on a police department in order to staff 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And then we have to look at the Los Center Police Department as a whole and understand we are ready or contracting out for some of the services. We contract out for dispatch services. We contract out for 911 services. We contract out to the Sheriff's Department for records, property evidence and major criminal investigations. And we also contract out to them for them to do concealed weapons permits. So there's a lot of things that we've offloaded over the years that we can no longer maintain because they're getting more complex, taking up more time and our staffing hasn't kept up with, with that. It's not a good thing. It's not a bad thing. It's just the way it is. And so we talked about staffing for a little bit. We can get into more details when people ask questions, but then we want to talk about crime. Crime is a big conversation we have all the time in the community. People turn on the TV, everybody's talking about crime rates. And I want you to know that in the state of Washington, we use a system called NIBR, which is used all over the state. And we report what's called Group A offenses to the state. And Group A offenses are crimes against persons, crimes against property and crimes against society. Crimes against society are things like drug arrests, weapons violations, those kinds of things are crimes against society. And you'll notice if we look at our crime rate over the years, that two things have increased in our community and predominantly there are assaults and drug arrests. So we have to again ask ourselves, why assaults? Well, the assaults are almost all DB related. And you know, those are mandatory arrests. We have to make an arrest. They have to be reported. So that's one thing. And then the drug arrests, almost all the drug arrests that we have are coming out of officers making car stops. A lot of them are by the junction and especially younger officers. Younger officers make more car stops. They're aggressive. They like to dig in things and make great arrests, but those all drive up communities' crime rates. And if we review all of our Group A offenses from 2015 to 2020, about 62% of the offenses are property crimes. And they're primarily thefts, all kinds of thefts, vandalism and motor vehicle theft. So people get their car stolen and that's a theft. 24% of the crimes are crimes against persons. And 14% are crimes against society, primarily drugs and narcotics. And I just want to emphasize that while, you know, we'd like to have zero crime in the community, that you're, it's very unlikely that a citizen in the city of Los Center is going to get victimized with a crime against person with a stranger. We don't have the drive-by shootings. We don't have the gang issues. Those are the things we don't have in our community. And predominantly, when you get assaulted, it's from somebody that you know, generally, believe it or not, a family member. And then if we look at crime and we want to compare our crime rate, the crime rate is every crime per 1,000 people in the state of Washington. And we want to compare our city with other cities between 2,500 and 5,000 because that's where the state of Washington breaks the stats up. Los Center, we are, we have 13 cities that have higher crime rates in the city of Los Center. Now, that doesn't mean much because some of these crime rates are 31 per thousand versus 32 versus 35. But we are tied with Moxley, which is 40, 4,100 people and Medina, which is 3,245 people. We have five other cities with lower crime rates, but even though I think the lower crime rates, I think the lowest is 17, small cities. But we are still, the state average in crime in the state of Washington is over 60%. It's like 60.5. So very safe city. You've got to be very careful when you look at crime rates. They will tell you that there's just one segment to look at. And the reason is crime rates only cover what's reported. You have a community that has a good relationship with the police department, they're going to report a lot of crimes. If we go out and we do education on, on, hey, report child abuse or domestic violence, guess what's going to happen in our community? Those cases are to get reported more, your crime rate goes up. If you have a community in the state has a poor relationship with the police department, they don't call the police for minor things. They'll, they'll call the police when there's a body in the street, but they're not going to call the, call you when somebody takes their potted plant off their porch. They're going to take care of, generally, they'll take care of the business themselves in the community. They don't call the police. And so remember that crime rates, when you hear about crime, is one piece of the puzzle of a lot of different moving parts. And so I just wanted to get, get to come across with that. And then there's another component we look at. So you have crime and we have patrol workload. And patrol workload comes from two places. It's community-generated or it's officer-generated. Community-generated is they call 311, 911 or they walk into police station. And then you have police initiated. That's, hey, that's the cops out there making car stops, stopping people, walking up and talking. Those both generate statistics. They generate numbers. But you've got to, got to really drill down into the, the data and say, okay, what's that mean? So we looked at five years of data for workload. We looked at 2018, I'm sorry, we looked at 2015 to 2019. We saw a big increase between 2018 and 2019. So in fact, the increase, police-initiated events were up 485%. And community-initiated events were up about 10%. And 10% in, in Los Center is about right, about 10%. Community-initiated calls go up about 10 to 13% year after year after year because the city's growing. And so that's going to happen. So you've got to go, well, what's driving that big increase at 485%? And so we had to drill down in it because it's, it's important to know, hey, what happened between 2018 and 2019? And so the largest increase in police-initiated events were traffic events, patrol emphasis and premise checks. So traffic events are car stops. Patrol emphasis is, hey, we tell an officer, we want you to go down towards the junction, sit on the road there and we want you to run radar because people are complaining about people speeding. And the other thing is premise checks. That's the officer getting out, vacation house checks, close, checking closed businesses, those kinds of things. So traffic events increased from 2018 to 2019 from 1,174 to 1,445. Patrol emphasis increased from 98 to 968. And that's part of that is what we, I talked to you about, about how we've driven traffic accidents down, reported traffic accidents because guys are doing proactive enforcement on the road, being visible, writing tickets, making car stops, and that drives traffic accidents down. And finally, premise checks. Premise checks was the biggest driver of all. They went from 400, 548 to 2,151. So that's a big increase. So you've got to take that into account. We're talking about work and crime, how we're looking at all this together and say, how these pieces all fit together and what's going on in the community. I, I then drill down and says, okay, what's the average time spent on a premise check? It's about three and a half minutes. The average time on a patrol emphasis is about 27 minutes and the average time spent on a traffic stop is about 13 minutes. So, you know, that's about what, what, what's going on. And we also looked at total workload in the Los Center Police Department. And we looked at data in 2019 specifically because that was the big increase in workload. And there's a thing called discretionary time versus consumed time. And you, what happens is you look at all of the minutes that you schedule officers a year. And let's say it's 100 minutes. And then you look at how much time is spent doing either officer-initiated stuff or handling calls for service from the community. Now let's say that's 50 minutes. And then another 50 minutes is what we call, that's the discretionary time where they're not handling anything, but they're free to, free in case something happens. So Los Center ended up with about 19% consumed time, handling stuff and about 81% discretionary time. Now it's important to remember that that is a statistic of an entire year worth of work. Some shifts are going to be busier than others. Some officers are busier than others. Some days of the week are busier than others, but at the end of the day, when you average it all up, your total workforce, about 81% is discretionary time and about 19% is consumed time. And then we wanted to look at, okay, between 2015, January 1st, 2015, December 31st, 2019, the Center Police Department handled about 19,583 calls for service. That's everything, officer-initiated, community-initiated. About 13% of those result in a report. And that's something to just remember. So 13% resulted in a report. And when you look at the same information out of that same date, date range, we handle about 114 Group A offenses a year. And that's the ones I just talked to you about earlier. Crimes against property, crimes against persons, crimes against society. So we average about nine and a half crimes per month. It's something we report. Sometimes there's more, sometimes there are less, but when you average it out over a five-year period, it comes out to about nine and a half offenses a month. And then we looked at arrests, same period of time, and arrests come out to about 6.5 arrests a month, which is pretty close to what we've reported in January. We reported five in January. The average is six and a half. My guess is, just based on my experience in this business, as we get into the warmer months and the pandemic goes away, arrest rates will go up because people will be out more. They'll be in their cars, be driving around, the bars are open. There's a reason people are out, cops stop you, then you get arrested. And then there's another statistic I wanted to look at and that's called mutually responses. Same time period, 2015 to 2019, we wanted to look at mutually response. And mutually response is not the number of events or calls where a unit goes outside the city or a unit from another city comes into our city. It's the number of units. So one call can have multiple units. You can have one call and have three units, two units, five units, depending on the size of the call, the severity, a lot more units. And then we converted that to hours because I wanted to know, okay, what's our mutually balance? How's things working? And we call that outbound is when we send a unit outside the city and inbound is when somebody sends us a unit into the city. And so we had about 1,203 hours inbound, where we relied on other agencies to come in and help us out. And we had about 1,836 hours where we sent our units outside the city, either to the county or Richfield, but literally all over the place. If somebody has an emergency and they need help, Vancouver has an officer-involved shooting and they need an officer in the perimeter. It wouldn't be unusual for something like that to have a Los Center unit respond and help out, especially in the middle of night when staffing levels are so low around the whole county, everybody is going to help everybody out. Very common. Response times. I looked at response times over five years, broke them down to priority. The biggest two priorities are one and two, those are emergencies and urgent. So, and those are the, the big ones where life is either being threatened or just been threatened. There are also your medical emergencies like AEDs, naloxone for Narcan, for overdoses. Your emergency calls, your average response time is four minutes and 35 seconds. Your urgent calls is six minutes, anomalous response time. The highest response time for the lowest priority you have in the city of Los Center is 10 minutes. So you're going to get a cop in the city of Los Center between four and a half minutes and 10 minutes, which is phenomenal. And so I just wanted to give you kind of a snapshot of where, where we are today. And then I want to kind of give you a snapshot of what's going to impact the police department in the future. One of those is staffing. I can tell you right now that you have young aggressive officers that you're going to hire for the city of Los Center. And this happens all over the country. There's nothing wrong with the city of Los Center, great place to work. But if you're, you know, a 24, 25-year-old officer and you can look to another agency and they have more crime and, you know, more detectives and traffic units and canines and all this stuff. There's a likelihood that you're going to do your time here and go somewhere else. That's okay. That's what happens. And so a lot of these small cities are starting to become training cities where we hire people, put them through the academy, put them through FTL training, get them on probation. And a couple of years down the line, they're going to go, well, you know, I'd really like to go work for Vancouver or somewhere else or Portland because I really want a lot of action. That's going to happen. You know, so that's something we have to look at. I think another thing that you're going to have to look at, training mandates. More and more training mandates are coming down from the state of Washington, adding, especially when it comes to crisis intervention and de-escalation and those kinds of things. And every time there's a mandate and we have to train, you have to remember when we're training, there's somebody either training on duty and we're filling overtime sometimes behind them, or they're off duty and we're filling overtime for them to go to training. That happens all the time. So that's just something to think about. And then there's some state legislation that you have to be aware of that's nobody is against police reform. I'm not. The chief's association isn't. But we want police reform, A, it's got to be affordable. And somebody's got to pay for it. It can't be forced down on the cities because the cities don't have money as it is now. We have, so that's something we have to think about. And it has to be reasonable and it can't hurt public safety. We can't have reforms like, let's just defund the police and get rid of them and think that everything's going to be okay. So there's some things you need to be aware of that are in committee now. They may become law, they may not, something may change and they're not exactly what they are in committee. But I can tell you the push right now nationwide is a lot of police reform. So one of the bills is going to form what they call community oversight boards. And a community oversight board is going to be members of your community who can't be related to law enforcement or former law enforcement or, or law enforcement at all. And they're going to have, they get 5% of your police budget to fund this oversight committee. They have subpoena power. They've got investigative power. They can hire their own attorney. They can conduct investigations. They can implement policy. They can access crime scenes and evidence and they can sue the city if the city doesn't follow their direction with the attorney that they've hired from the funds that you've provided. So that's something you've got to think about. And at the end of the day, if you want to hire a police chief, the committee puts together the list of police chief candidates. I don't know what the criteria is, but they put together the list and the mayor or the city manager could only hire the police chief off that list. So that's one of the things that you've got to think about in the back of your mind because the police department loses 5% of its budget. Now, the good thing is it's only for Now, the good thing is it's only four police departments that have 10 or more officers. But you know, in a couple of years, Los Center could be at 10. If we're eight, eight now, 10 is only two more positions. They want to eliminate qualified immunity, which means that's more, more lawsuits on police officers and the citizens. And testimony that they had in Olympia, a lot of the big, you know, WCIA, WC, the big organizations, they said insurance rates will get so expensive that you won't be able to afford insurance anymore. So that'll become, the people will become, you'll either have to pay a lot of money for insurance or you'll become self insured. And you know, that'll bankrupt cities. Mandated equipment, there's still a potential, it hasn't come out. There's a way they're gonna come to that, but haven't mandated body cams yet. But a body cams, we got eight body cams over five years and cost the city about 35,000 plus storage fees. And those storage fees are gonna go up because as you keep more and more, remember if you, you keep video on everything, that data gets bigger and bigger and bigger. And then you have a retention schedule before you can delete video. And if you have cases that are in the appeal process or things like homicides or rapes, that video is gonna stay there forever. So those are just things we have to think about. Additional mandated reporting, if we, there's a, a current one in the committee that if we pull a gun on anybody, we have to report it to an entity and we keep stats. Well, that's more work for all of us. There's another one, if we stop a juvenile, before we could talk to a juvenile, we have to give them a number and they will call and they will get an attorney 24/7 to talk to a attorney. So if we stop a juvenile at three o'clock in the morning and there's multiple kids, that's multiple phone calls to multiple attorneys before you can even talk to them, which will mean units will stay tied up longer because they gotta wait for that attorney. They have the conversation and this, this law cannot be waived by the juvenile. The juvenile cannot waive his rights to this. There's some changes that, another one that they're coming down with that may impact us. This is a kind of a way around body cams. We're not mandating body cams, but they're gonna say that anytime you interview anybody that's being investigated for a felony or a juvenile, you have to have audio and video recording of that interview, even if it's on the street. Well, that's just, that's just another way to buy body cams for everybody. So that's something we have to remember. Another couple of risks that the Los Center Police Department has, you don't have 24 hour supervisory coverage. Remember you've only got 12 hours of supervisory coverage right now in a 12, a 24 hour period. So there's some risks to that because when you have use of force incidents, the standard is the supervisor comes to the scene, interviews people, collects evidence. And that's, that's not unlawful force. That's any force where you use a taser, a baton or something like that. So that's liability down the line when we ultimately somebody files a complaint and we didn't have a supervisor on scene. We don't have 40 millimeter launchers, which is kind of a standard nowadays. We have tasers and we have handguns, but there is a middle, less lethal force. It's called a 40 millimeter shoots a sponge round. And that's for the person that's too far away for a taser and they're not committing a crime where you would use a handgun. A lot of times that's a person that's threatening to charge you and kill you with a knife, but you can't get close enough with a taser. You have full deployment of 40 millimeter battle round has for a full deployment. The other thing is we don't have full deployment of patrol rifles because we have people that have not gone to school and every officer should have a patrol rifle in the car because again, that's liability. If you go to an active shooter and that officer can't engage because he's, doesn't have the firepower. It's gonna fall back on the agency on why we didn't provide that equipment and that training. And finally, the other thing is the police facility. Police facility is at its end of life. It doesn't have public restrooms, doesn't have a conference room. It doesn't have a female locker room. It doesn't have a legal detention area, doesn't have a secure interview room. So you have to look at what recently what Ridgefield has built and what Glam is built over the last couple of years. They need about 4,000 square feet and they're working out of about 1,890 now. So 4,000 square feet, depending on whether you've got to buy the land or not and whether you have to build up or out, it's gonna be about three and a half to four and a half million dollars. So that's another thing long term that we have to think about. So those are things just, I know it's long, a lot of numbers been thrown at you. You will get a copy of a written report that'll have more detail in it. But I just wanted to give you a quick overview to let you know that yes, we are doing our job as an assessment and there's no conflict of interest. I'm doing the job. The assessment is pretty much done and now you're intern police chief, working on a separate contract. Thank you.
Thank you for that, chief. And again, I apologize for the mix up earlier, not to get that included with the, your first report. But, but that was a lot of information, counsel. We will be coming forth with our report here real soon. It'll be presented in the work session. We'll get that scheduled and the opportunity for a lot more discussion. But with that being said, do you have any questions that you would like to ask the chief this evening before we move on?
I think I can wait until the work session because I, I've heard quite a bit of words in there that do bring up questions. So if we're having a full work session on it, I can wait.
Okay, very good. Yeah, there'll be lots and lots of information forthcoming, so appreciate that.
Yeah, I just want to thank, want to thank the chief for that information. It's quite intriguing and I look forward to the work sessions as well.
Very good. Okay, so we do have one item left on the agenda for this evening. It's an executive session to discuss, discussions to interpretation and application of labor agreement and potential grievance proceedings. So I'm gonna ask the council to leave this meeting. You were forwarded another invite for another go to meeting. We'll go to that. And then we will come back into general session after that executive session is over. There will be no action taken this evening. And I don't anticipate that the executive session will take more than 10 minutes. So it is right now, we'll just call it 7:47 and we'll, we'll go to the executive session and then we'll come back to this meeting.
Do you want to pick a time to come back?
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it looks like we've all joined, we're back in the, rejoined the original meeting. It is right now 8:01. The council has come out of executive session. Again, there'll be no action taken this evening as a result of the executive session. So with that being said, if I could get a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you for everything this evening, counsel. And please be careful if it does in fact snow. Be safe.
Thank you.